Called this regular meeting, City Council to order June 18th, 2019, 7:00 PM.
Okay, additions to the agenda?
I need under new business to discuss that letter from EDP. Any other additions to the agenda?
Citizens comments? Oh, excuse me. Need a motion to approve the additions to the agenda. Motion, second. Yeah, motion and second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, citizens comments?
We've got a couple of, Julie Lyon and I do like the opportunity to address the council. I'm John Prescott with Sunflower Service and Citizens out of Great Bend, Kansas. And we serve the intellectually delayed and disabled children and adults in the five counties. Stafford County is one of those counties. And here last fall, in fact, it was December if I remember correctly, we were visiting with the chamber over in Stafford. And there was a comment that said, don't you guys run the public transportation as well in our five counties? Yes, we do. We come through very early in the morning and we bring people back to Stafford, St. John, late afternoon, early evening. And so there was a comment that said, what would it take to increase that transportation opportunity and maybe come to town, Stafford, St. John, and then back to Great Bend and then bring people back, say, one day a week? And I said, let me look into that. So I got with the Kansas Department of Transportation and they said, yeah, there's a thing called expanded service route that you could pursue. And what you could do then is provide service to those two communities, Stafford and St. John, and help people that have difficulty either not owning vehicles or missing some transportation or affordability. So we looked into that this last fall and early this winter and discovered that we could do that. We were approved. KDOT actually pays for 70% of the cost of that service. And what we're looking at is coming up into Stafford every Thursday morning at 9:30 or so, picking people up, having a, maybe the senior citizen or senior center. We pick folks up and then we come over here and pick folks up here at designated location, take them to Great Bend, see the doctor, get prescription drugs, do whatever they need to do, and then we'll take them back 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So, and what really got our attention, and here, we'll go ahead and hand this out, as we did some demographic studies that, in fact, here, I'll tell you why, if y'all just want to hand these around. That would be great, thank you very much. You actually have 68 people in the county that have no automobile. We've got 412 adults below poverty, and we've got elderly 1,090. And so this transportation route is going to only cost the rider $2 a trip. So it'd be $2 to get to Great Bend, $2 to get back home. So it's a very economical solution to people that have a need for it. So when you look at the cost, so we did a cost study, and to cover fuel, labor, maintenance, insurance for this vehicle, it's, costs is $487 a week to provide it. However, as I mentioned earlier, the Kansas Department of Transportation is going to take care of 70% of that. But that, so total cost was about $25,324. KDOT's picking up $17,324, going to leave us a shortage of about $8,000. So we've approached Stafford, I've also approached Barton County, Stafford County, the commissioners, and the city of Great Bend, and said, would you co-opt that? Help us meet these needs. So what we're here to ask tonight, if you consider, all I'd like to do is request from you $1,000 a year to help us meet that $8,000 obligation. Since we're taking people to Barton County, I think it's only fair that Barton County and Great Bend picks up a pretty good size. They're, I'm asking them for $2,000 from Great Bend and $2,000 a year from Barton County. And then we've approached the county commissioners here for Stafford County for $2,000 as well. And so there's been some great interest, and so that's why Julie Lyon and I are here this evening. She's on my board of directors of Sunflower. And that's why we're here this evening, let you know what we're working on and then ask you respectfully if you could consider a $1,000 a year cost to help put this service together. And then we'll do everything else. So that's the reason we're here this evening.
Counsel, comments?
Who have you got committed already? Have the commissioners approved it in Stafford County?
They're working on that. It's not formally approved, but they are definitely working on it.
City of Stafford?
Stafford, they're working the same thing. And county, Barton is definitely looking at it and how they're going to work it into there, and so is the city of Great Bend. So they're all in the process of, okay, we need to look at our budget and see where we come up with the money and then lock it in. So we've gotten really positive feedback, really have.
So the bus will come here and basically you take them where they want to go?
Correct. We actually take them to Great Bend and then we'll take them anywhere they need to go into Great Bend. So if they need to go, you know, to see the doctor and then they are, they're done in an hour, we come back and pick them up and take them somewhere else if they need to go somewhere else. And then we'll actually, the bus will actually return in reverse order, you know, come to St. John first in the afternoon, it's coming back, drop them off here, and then take those from Stafford back, and then we'll take the bus back to Great Bend.
Any other comments?
What do we, don't we run a bus, Jamie?
I mean, we have a bus that can be utilized by Sunflower Senior Center.
Is that on a regular schedule?
They have like trips, they, like they go pick places. They usually, I think, utilize it to go eat. I don't think it's necessarily used for like doctor's appointments.
How many, how many?
The bus is available for you.
How many people do you have now from St. John?
We're actually picking up, let me see, a couple from Stafford early in the morning, and then I think one from St. John and I think one from Maxville. On the early morning, we do a five-day-a-week route, but it's very early in the morning and we don't bring them back until, you know, 5:00, 5:30. And so when we tried to apply that in Stafford anyway, we got some pushback and said, I don't want to be ready for this bus at 6:30 in the morning and not be able to come back home till 5:30. Don't you have a different solution? And that's when I went to the Kansas Department of Transportation and said, what can we do? Is there some other type of grant that we can get? And that's when they introduced me to what they call an expanded service route. That's a little more reasonable in regards to getting up, running some errands, and then getting back at a decent time of the day. In fact, it's kind of interesting if y'all know Teresa Miller. She had said, so y'all come by every Monday through Friday? I said, yeah, we do. We come into all these towns, Monday through Friday, early in the morning, and we'll take people to work. She said, I wonder how many people know that if they need a job, you would, let's say Red Barn in Great Bend, because they've got a need for a lot of employees, I wonder how many people know that you would pick them up for $2, take them to work, and you'd take them home for another $2. And I said, yeah, that's a good question. We need to do an educational program in the communities and let people know that if you don't have a job and if you'd like to work in Great Bend, we can pick you up and have you to work within a half hour of possibly normal start time and get you back home by 5:30, 6:00. So we're going to push that as well. But she said, you know, I don't think people know that, and there's people that could use a job.
So City Councils?
I think if we're interested, it's something we should table and bring up on the next meeting.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, well, that's a bad idea. You gotta think about it.
That's fair. Would you like me here at your next meeting or would you rather me not? Because I'm fine either way. If you'd have questions at your extra meeting or your next meeting?
I think we'll just reach out to you.
That's fair. Sure. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You put that under old business.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Any other systems comments?
Oh, yeah, because you've got three minutes too.
Can I, can I expand just a little bit?
Sure.
A little background, John's here, it sounds like this was just kind of a good idea. There's actually been a lot of work that's gone into this. So after I was elected as mayor of Stafford, I started looking into Sunflower because the county provides some funding for them annually. And I'd never heard of them, so I was like, what are we getting for our money, for our taxpayer dollars? And so my mission was to get as much from them as possible since we're paying from them. And we've actually expanded some of their services into this county and surrounding counties. I did join their board as an extra effort to make sure that the people in Stafford County were getting their money's worth. And we did have a kickoff meeting in December, and this is one of the issues that had come up. So expanding their transportation, they offer recycling, that they've done a lot of work with the county and even cities on, and shredding. So we've added a shredding box at the library. So we're, we are getting more services for the dollars that the county has provided. This was something that was specific in the comments that came out of the community and communities, because we've talked with St. John, like particularly the circles groups. But I think there's people in my town, and I'm sure that you have some in your town, that do not have vehicles. I anticipate the city of Stafford will provide the $1,000. They were like, kind of like you, wanted to learn a little bit more about the organization. There were some concerns about the money, you know, taking people outside of the city limits, and people already do that. The more they talked about it, the more they're like, you know, this could be really good for so-and-so, and come up with a list of about 10 different people just off the top of their heads. So this isn't just something that makes you feel good, because it kind of, oh, look what we did, you know, but it's actually good for the community. So I'd encourage you to think it through and come back.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. Any other systems comments? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, June 4th, 2019, entertain a motion on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next, appropriation ordinance 6-18-19 and the amount of $38,635.86. Do we hear a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Discussion discussion.
If you want some discussion, yeah, go ahead.
Jeff, just a question on the $9,800 for the power plant compliance, is that just routine maintenance stuff?
Yeah, I thought we voted on it, but I guess we didn't. I remember telling you about we were going to do it in May, but Jamie said she didn't think we ever voted on it. It's an ever-three-year deal.
Okay.
In order to keep our exhaust compliance. It would have been $12,000, the Cooper still got some problems. As soon as we get, the guy that was going to work on it had some, a family issue with his wife and had to go home during the last trip out here. So as soon as he can get back out here and we get it running, she'll come back and she'll certify it the same way she did the other two. And so the total cost will probably be the $12,000. So, yeah, it's an ever-three-year deal in order to keep our exhaust compliance. And there's some maintenance stuff we have to do with it, but this is for EPA, so.
I just, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
I think we approved this spending bill because it was one of the bills.
I think it was included.
I can't remember.
I thought we did.
We maybe did.
I think it was included with the...
We did it back in early April, late March or early April. As soon as I found out about it, I notified you, but I can't remember whether we voted or not.
What was broken at the power, like what did you have to order to?
That water pump?
Yeah, I think it was included in all of that. And we might have just over.
When she first notified me is when I brought it in here, but I, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Fine, I just was curious.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Both opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Both abstain. Okay, motion carries, three, two. Okay, department heads, committee reports, public utility supervisor, Jason?
Yes, sir.
You have any?
Well, I had just, quick notice, I had just typed up a few things about going over the electric department, and I was just wanting to know if anybody, if we were still open to getting a couple of linemen. Yes, ma'am.
I've had, I've had three applications come in the door, and then I think I got one through Facebook today. So we have three in here.
I mean, right now, it's just you and Jeff taking care of electrical? Okay. Well, I mean, we do have something open, I guess.
Yeah, I've, I've showed Jeff hit all of them that have come in and just waiting for his go-ahead to call people in for interviews or...
Well, and you'd hired Cody back and then he backed out. After we gave him the stipulations, he backed out, so.
Well, I'm not opposed to one.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to hiring another one. I guess it gets 90% of our revenue.
Yeah, well, we got that out, I guess, so we're trying. Either get applications or you don't.
Yeah. And, I mean, I know the end of school was just here, but I wasn't even, I guess I didn't even realize that they did it, but I know next year at the end of school, I'm going to reach out to Pratt. Jeff and I kind of talked about that after school was out and how we should have done, but maybe get ahold of the college down in Pratt because they have that program, and just get our name out there to some of the instructors that, that we are looking and see how that goes.
On, on here on the water part of it, where are we at? Well, on Ninth Street, I guess. It's kind of been torn up for like a month and a half or two now?
We're getting that, trying to get it tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep. We're going to go by and tell, tell everybody that we're shutting them off this thing in the morning and then we'll get after it.
Okay.
And then I was going to ask about the roofs on the water, because the main one is well fired and it has major holes in it. And I was wanting to know if you guys wanted us to try to squeeze that in or you wanted to hire it out? It literally, I mean, it's, when it rains, it just comes right through there, and I just don't want to get it on the electric box in there.
Remind me which one's five, Jason?
Over here by the...
The east one? Yeah.
So you guys think most of the houses need them?
I looked on, I looked on top of the other two, and it looks like there was wood around the hatch, but it's all concrete. So I think I'll get, up there, it wouldn't be so hard, because I could just put some of the, like a piece of felt with some black rubber around that. But this one, it's fully coated with tar and it has nothing but big old rock on top of it.
And it's got flat rafters, it's got two basins crossed it.
And it's, the big old hole, one of the biggest holes up there is this big. It's literally that big a hole, because I got up there here a while back and took pictures of it.
We only need a hatch in it big enough to be able to pull the pump. Everything else can be solid, but that roof has gone way past.
Those small problems turn into big problems, people take care of it.
It's bad, yeah. It's bad.
See if you can get past it until you guys can, maybe have some time to fix it, maybe in the winter. I don't know.
What, is it a flat roof?
It's flat. All of them are flat, but that one's wood and plywood, where the other two over here are concrete.
So you're basically going to have to really truly reconstruct the roof?
Yes, because there's some rot, major rot in some of those tubusixes.
There'd be no point.
Sheet rots a lot, the sheet rots down, we clean it up.
If you don't maintain a roof, you lose your structure, so either we fix it or harden it out.
The rest of it's all brick.
No, it's not.
It's only the roof.
I understand that.
I mean, if we could build, if we could build a pitched roof on it and still be able to put a hatch on it, we would have less problem with it, you know?
Are most of them the same size or not, the buildings?
They're fairly close, yeah.
See if we can get some quotes from some local contractors.
10 by 15.
It's like, if you're going to fix it next week anyway, if the city were to replace it, you know, we'll just get some quotes and see how much it's going to cost to go from there and get us.
Or fix it.
I don't know. Yeah.
Or just fix it. I mean, if you think you have the crews to fix it, I'd fix it in the house?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Well, Ross, what do you think?
Well, I guess I was going to ask about the water department. We got that, everybody in town got their notice about a compliance with our last city bill on the water. Is that, can you give me the rundown about that or how often we're supposed to test? And we didn't?
You test every, twice a month.
We send in a test every other week, two, every two weeks?
Pretty much, yeah.
What's the, who's, who does that or who pulls those or what's, how did that?
I tried to pull them when, when, but I was gone that one time and I passed on to Cody and he didn't get it done. And that was what the whole thing was. So I sent, I called the lady at the state and she says, she pretty much said, don't freak out, it happens, just print, print it out, let the public know, and that's it.
Any fine with that?
No.
Just a violation?
We just have to put it out and it, we tried to, it's hard to send those out because I don't think we had a lot of response, but you get that letter and it makes you worried, but the issue is already taken care of by the time you even get that letter, so.
Totally get it. Totally get it. I was just curious how often those had to be sent in and whose.
Yeah, we just had another big one, there's an atrazine test. They, they have a, they have a little calendar list of the year of what months you got to check, and then they'll have, every, every, every month is the two tests for your coliform. And then you have your atrazine or you have nitrates or you have this, and there's a list of all the organics they test in that water.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on. Public Works Supervisor, David?
I gave each of you some stuff, kind of throughout the 2019. One thing was about the signs. What I have in there, she, I finally got the email back, and it was $12,1165. That's posts, signs, brackets, that's everything. So I talked to Phil down at the county, see what he can get me on prices, because we were getting some of our posts and stuff from him. He switched to the square post, what is figured in this bid, because the twist and the wind and stuff like that, they seem to hold up better, plus they have holes where the anchor goes down in the ground three foot and the, you basically sleeve it and it bolts to the bottom. So if somebody hits it or gets damaged, unbolt it, pop it back out, replace it.
Not concrete, did it end then?
No.
Okay.
No, the anchor's three foot in the ground.
Oh. Well, I was going to throw a loop in here. While we're talking about street signs, I've been working in Kinsley, and this is something that they have on their signs just to show support for their school. I don't think we really have anything like that where it'd be neat to put on at least, in my opinion, down First and Fourth Street all the way to Broadway, put our school mascot on one side of it. It's just, while we're at it, I think that's a pretty neat deal. I mean, I just don't feel like we've done anything.
Do you have any idea how they did them? Did they have somebody stamp them or you don't know?
Mike, this company here is National Sign, which is out of Ottawa. They can do whatever you want.
So my question is, I mean, it's just, you guys are okay with doing that, whether it's, like I said, at least those two or the whole ton or whatever? I think it looks neat and maybe I'll have to check into it.
David, would that still comply with?
We can go with a blue-black ground with white letter. It's same price as green, you know, you wanted to do same price, you just wanted to change it up, we're school colors.
David, what was the total cost on these signs? $12,000?
$12,1165.
That's to do all the signs?
That is every one of them.
Every street sign?
Every street sign.
That's HID, high intensity reflective. It's the top, talking with them and reading in my book, it's going to last longer than going with something a step below, just to get us, oh, compliance or whatever. This is a step above that, that's going, supposed to last a lot longer, where you can still read it and it doesn't fade out as quick.
And then is this a mandate? Have I been asleep? Is this a mandate that we do this?
Well, the, I mean, I think some of you last meeting brought up wanted prices on the signs. I would say when we went around, I bet there was probably 50 signs that were down that are gone.
With the mandate, they're 911 compliant.
Yeah.
I'm not sure when it changed, but the compliance for 911 changed.
And also, our signs now are four-inch, with our speed zones 40 and under, being a public, two-lane road has to be six-inch. The four-inch is 25 and under, and that's the federal highway specs or whatever. And that's for public, anything, and it must be seven-foot tall from the bottom of the sign.
Counsel, have any problems with David looking into ESI's idea?
I don't have a problem. I guess if you're changing all to begin with and see what the cost, I mean, I don't know. It'd be a bad idea.
David, can you look into that and just bring it to us next council meeting, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
And you want it first and fourth to Broadway?
That's, my thought was at least, at least first and fourth to Broadway when people come to see the games.
Because it changes, changes the decorating.
Right.
I mean, Kinsley has them in the whole city.
It may not cost any more to them than the whole city, right? It is to do double run.
Yeah, it's a bad idea.
I mean, did that went up around the school, you'd have a third of them, probably.
Yeah. You can keep that, David.
Okay. Next thing?
Some of you wanted me to look into lining the pool. I talked to three companies today and they do not recommend it on a municipal pool, because as far as if somebody has sharp toenails, wearing jewelry, you're, they're going to cut it. And I asked about the fiberglass, and I do have a bid here from Glassking. The other three people that I talked to, like Edlin Pools, Pools Plus, I can't remember the other one. But the one, the other two wouldn't do fiberglass on that, something like that. If it was a brand-new pool, they'd be more inclined to, by trying to get it covered where it's, you know. So talking with them, doing the fiberglass, if you get a crack or something like that, they think we're going to spend almost as much to patch it and seal it and recoat it, gel coat it with fiberglass. That's all the thing we've cost to do it again. I don't know if you got that paper from Glassking in there?
This is to fix the leak that's on the bottom?
This is to line all three pools on that piece of paper.
Is it leaking?
But what's, yeah, why are we lining?
You guys wanted the numbers, the meter reading. I checked it on the 7th, it was 3175, and I took it this morning on the 18th, 3178.
3,000 gallons.
3,000 gallons, and that runs to the showers and all.
Yeah. What was the timeframe then?
11 days.
11 days.
Jeff, do you think a lot of that operated?
They have bathrooms and stools and, I mean, you know, there's a combination, they're all metered together. So there really is no leak in the bottom, we've got it sealed up.
Obviously, yeah.
When, when she back washes is the only time that it's going down at all.
That's fantastic.
We were holding the baby pool and we were holding the big pool. When she back washes, it drops the medium pool down, so that's when we run the water. But it's only when she back washes.
Oh, we aren't.
So it's a lot better than it, since I've been here, that it has been.
Looks like you have a solution looking for a problem.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we're still, we got one valve, we're just trying to tweak, whether it's eighth of a turn, fourth turn, trying to get it set where we don't have that draw. But it's getting better.
And you're not using the slide, like the water on the slide, and that's not accumulated into this 3,000 gallons?
No, yeah, well, it's on the building, Jeff. Wouldn't that go through there?
Yeah, sure. It's running now, though, I mean, they run it over there. I, the operation be that good.
Yeah, that's just nothing, that.
I mean, I wouldn't worry about anything, but.
I don't know.
What I'm, what I'm going to look into is...
I guess I just thought we had way more belief in that.
They have it capped on like an inch and a half. So when we do, when we go up there this fall, I want to look into plonking that back with that inch and a half. I don't know why it was ever capped, because what happens is it's not pushing enough water down it to get the side of it, so when kids are, whenever going down it, they got to get in the pool first and be able to go down it, because it gets hot. So I want to look into hooking that back up to the inch and a half.
David, did you ever get the confirmation from that other quote that I sent out to them with the pump, the stringer?
Yeah.
Have that happen.
Have you seen?
That is, we're gonna have to replace the basket and the strainer anyway, the pump, we think the bearings are going out. So I got a cost of the strainer to the pump, the motor, basically, you know, unbolt it and bolt it back in, through Silverado Electric, and it came to sixty-three, sixty-three eighteen, or whatever it came to.
Sixty-three eighty-one?
Versus just trying to replace the motor, which, you know, we don't know anything about that impeller, we gotta replace the strainer, basket and stuff anyway. But that's all of it.
This is out right now, it needs done right now?
It's, yeah, it could be any day.
You drive down by, you can hear half a block.
Yeah, I was just.
Pretty loud.
And then we'll install it?
Yep.
We can install, yeah.
But it's just, I mean, it matter what day it is. And I'd like to have one, I'd like to rebuild that motor, when we get it out. Take it up to Silverado, or whoever, so we have one sitting on the shelf. I mean, that one got, what, thirty-two years?
Thirty-three years.
Three years out of it.
We gotta use the price of rebuild, and make sure it's feasible.
Yeah, well, I'm not just gonna take it up there without, I mean.
Does that have any kind of warranty?
I, that's all they sent me, I didn't really read into it.
Probably pretty cheap rebuild, as long as they're not totally destroyed.
I used the option to rebuild electric motors, and I think they're reasonable.
Yeah.
They're on Tim Street.
But the strainer's destroyed, and that basket, isn't it, or all but, did she say?
Yeah, and she's, she's complained about it too, Stephanie, it's something that we, it needs to be replaced.
And that's included?
That is everything.
Yeah, I'd say get it done.
Want to vote on that, for a bit?
Okay. Do you need a motion on that? Okay, so here are motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the pump and motor for this wooden pool from Silverado Electric for six thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
We have budget four.
Yes.
Pearl drew in eighty bucks last month.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Anything else, David?
Unless you guys have something?
I got something I completely forgot about, where are we at with, when we bought that truck for Jason, trading it in each year, is that?
He's gonna let me know, I called him roughly a month ago, just to see where we're at. With that same package and everything, he's gonna have to wait, till they start producing more, instead of four drives and stuff, and the full four-door. As soon as they start coming out, he's gonna call me, he said, I don't care if it's another couple months. He said, you're still on, whenever I get something going, I'll call you guys. So that's all I've heard, I haven't heard that it's came in, or nothing like that, he's supposed to let me know. Also, speaking of that, I went ahead and picked up the rest of the fountain. It's over there in the trailer. I don't have a, what it cost, oh, it was twenty-nine ninety-five, I think.
Yeah, it's on here.
Right, it's three thousand.
But it looks, it looks really good, and I gotta go pick up, or have him email me some pictures, he took pictures of the process. What took the most time was it kept changing, he'd blast it, and it turned black, he'd blast it. And so it was a prob, more of a process, try to get it done, where he can, you know, primer it, then powder it, but it turned out really good.
And speaking on that, we'll have a big reveal, so everyone stay away. Once it's all done, it'll be a nice big project for the entire town to come to.
Making a ban?
Yeah.
Millings? For basically everything that means, needs, needs to be, I mean, if you were to jump on it a month early, are you ready?
Yeah, yep. All we gotta do is run three pieces of, basically run three poly pipes inside of that one, and set the fountain and hook it up.
Millings, you got them, what's, what's the?
Oh, that was, some of you can tell that I went back over to West Street. Joe Cornell gave me the permission to go out in his field, whatever I needed to do. There's a mud hole down there, that I'm trying to work around. Pull that stuff, put it on the, on the road, build it up, and putting millings on top. The millings are from Chad Fisher, they're cleaner. They don't have, the biggest chunk I've seen was about three and a half inches by maybe a half inch, and I've only seen a couple of them, to put on top of there.
I guess I got mixed emotions about selling ours for eight dollars a ton, and buying them back for fifteen, that seems incredibly counterproductive, in my opinion, but, that's just me.
And ours is two totally different, I'd, I'd pay more, I'd pay fifteen for what Chad has before I.
Put them on a dirt road and let a hundred thousand pound spray trucks drive across them?
I think you'd be better off on the road, before you get to the millings, is if you get rock, and then sand, gets the road stable, before you even dream about the millings on. Because millings will not last with heavy traffic. I mean, I, I use millings in my silo, but it's a rock base, and then rock on top of the base, and then millings on top. If you just go out and put millings on it, right now, at this point, and go heavy traffic, it will all disappear. It will go to China in no time.
And that's not, I mean, I'm not putting millings on it right away. I mean, I still got more rock to put on it, I mixed rock with it, the other day, when I pulled it. I wanna put rock back on it, let trucks drive on it.
Run it for a while, then let's revisit it.
A year away from milling.
Yeah, before we do any millings, I just don't wanna do that.
We've still got probably two hundred ton, maybe a little more of that rock left, I think, that we had left from Fifth Street. And it's that good granite, that sharp granite rock, it'll bite down in there, it should pack like that other day.
Available from the grain that you do this summer on, everything like West Street that we're sold?
I mean, I got concrete and stuff to do before I can even mill. I don't know how, I would like to at least get from Nutting over to West, and West North to Bobby Stompets. But I got catch basins to do, I got curb flow lines to do before I can even mill, because I don't wanna mill it, asphalt it, come back and tear it back up, do the flow line curb.
So, if you were to put rock on Southwest Street, you're gonna wait for a while, until it gets beat down? Maybe we could just use the millings?
Rest of the summer into the fall, see where we're at.
Just use the milling?
Use the millings that we're gonna melt, instead of pan.
I would say just try it, can you dump more millings on top of it?
Yeah, you can.
All you're gonna do is build the base and together, keep going up.
I mean, if we can use ours, you know how broken out our ruts are, ours has more chunks, you know, we put chunks down first. If we get a couple of those from Chad, put it on top, where it's finer.
Chad's would be a finishing project, product, but, I mean, it's a good product.
I just didn't wanna go buy them right now, and I don't think we're ready for them.
No.
I think you're right. For us.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I'd take the free stuff first.
Yeah.
Do you wanna discuss a dumpster deal with them, about the problems we've been having?
I've talked to Jamie a little bit about that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Okay, Grant Administrator, Lisa Cornell.
I talked to Lisa on Friday, she's stuck in Wichita with weather tonight, so she couldn't make it. Basically, she got an email, and we are about to go on the inactive status for the Safe Routes to School. And she just wanted to confirm that that is what you are intending, without doing any of the projects that, that they had gone over.
Was this part of the project?
I don't think so, I think that's separate, because she said, several of that, she said that she does think that, that, is it through KDOT?
Yeah, she's, she's getting a grant for some of the street signs that will sell this project. And she's waiting to hear back, she's supposed to hear, supposed to have heard already.
Right.
But she's trying to push it along, so that project can be done before school starts, obviously. She said we could paint the lines and everything we could do, up, up to, you know, put the signs in, it'll be the very last thing.
Excuse me?
If, but the, but the sidewalk project is the only project that's part of the Safe Routes to School, is what I understand.
That's the way that I understand it, but.
And, and it's a, sorry.
Isn't this thing backwards? It's drawing to schools, you're letting kids out on the right-hand side of a car, on the opposite side of the school. Shouldn't you be letting kids out on the right-hand side of the car, on the school side? Looks to me like the whole thing's backwards. Because you're going north, and then to the west, and kids are getting dumped out of those?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
It's backwards.
I mean, if you're, if you're kids, you know, passenger side.
You're getting out on the opposite side of the street.
What do you mean, you're saying if you're going northbound? Are you, are you saying according to these plans?
Yeah, you got the traffic going north, and then going east.
He's not talking about the sidewalk, he's talking about the making the street, and that's a one-way, you need to.
Yeah, school's over here.
But the, the, when you, when you go to drop off?
That's what they wanna do, but.
Yeah, that's, that's drawn as a one-way.
Assuming your kid's on the passenger side of your vehicle, and you're on the driver's side, you can prove it.
Most of the kids I see come scoot, sit up front.
I don't think, I don't think they wanted to change it to a one-way street. Yeah.
Well, this is drawn as a one-way. Now it is.
This is loading zone, the unload zone, loading zone. I thought they just wanted to change how the parking was.
That's right.
Because they still have parking right over here, that's not a one-way street if you have parking on the north side of the street.
Parking on either side on a one-way street. I mean, that's what I'm looking at, it's a one-way.
I thought they said that it wasn't feasible to make it a one-way street. They just wanted to change the flow of it, and take the parking out away from the, from the fence there for the park.
I'm looking at it.
And move it all across the street, I don't think they wanted to do it.
And then in here would be like the.
And basically, for like the buses, the buses would come in here to unload and load kids in front of the school.
Okay, alright.
I don't think they, if I remember right, I don't think they wanted a one-way, that's what they had originally thought about doing, when they done the study, they said that a one-way was not. They didn't feel that it was necessary, because they could change how you park and how they unload kids. You probably have it in there somewhere.
Sure better be finding out.
But this, this is something that doesn't necessarily have to be, well.
The things that have this done, have the lines done by the time school starts.
And then is the signage, is the signage gonna come after that, how's it gonna work? Are we gonna have to supply electricity to these signs, or they're gonna be flashing deal, or?
No, I think they're all just street signs.
Just street signs?
I think the only thing we had to supply was the poles.
So we're not gonna do the flashing?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we believe the ones that we have. Any flashing signs? Yeah, this would just be updated signs.
I think they're.
So then the stop signs and that stuff all stay where they are now?
Unless we decide to take them out per their recommendation.
I didn't know about like over here on Broadway and those two, you know, we talked about a slow, a slow flashing light during school sign and that stuff. I didn't know whether you decided whether you wanted to do that or not.
The sidewalk is obviously the main expense of this, and that's really what.
She, she, yeah, I, I talked to her a little bit today, and she, she told us, she told me, that basically we'd have to decide tonight, if we want to take the sidewalk from Fourth and Monroe to the rec center, which would be through the same, that would be it. That would be a twenty percent, I'd say eighty percent of the grant.
And that would connect the, the previous sidewalk?
Basically, yeah.
Which the kids, because the kids walk from after school to the wet center quite often.
I was understanding she wanted to go from the rec, it was from the rec to connect it, connect it at Bannington's over there. I didn't think it was just this.
Well, it's not that much. This is only one block.
Yeah.
What about widening that out, and making it like a walking in a bicycle lane, without spending the expense of the concrete to narrow up the street? There on the west side of that, going north and south?
Talking about kinda where Ferrelline rooms?
Along the east side there.
It's a heck of an embankment, right there, that'd be hard to get a sidewalk cutting there.
Well, if we did, it'd have to be in the street.
Well, I think that's what the plan was here, was just to put it in the street, and narrow the street. Was the original plan, when they done that?
It might cause some drainage issues.
Is there any storm drains?
There is to the south.
Right there.
Everything drains to the south there.
You mean just paint on, just paint on a, just paint on a crosswalk, a walk?
Bicycle walk, or, yeah, or a walk, you know, deal in there, paint it white. I mean, we could stencil it for that, for crosswalks only, if you get somebody in there in a vehicle, you write them a ticket.
Yeah. That sounds a lot cheaper than concrete.
One way or the other, I guess we'll have to prove tonight.
We could still, we could still keep it clean that way, you know?
If we could do it that way, I doubt that they even approved to pay eighty, twenty. Because you're talking about some, some time.
I don't know, by the time you pay an engineer, we could probably pour our own concrete sidewalk, if that's what you really wanted to do for a block. Because them engineers charge you two hundred thousand dollars to draw it up for a whole block.
I'm on Jeff's side, paint it up, keep it painted, keep it north.
I mean, I think you could paint it and put signs there.
We can connect it with the crosswalk, you know, they've got this crosswalk.
It would keep you at Ferrelline yard too, I mean, that's a problem, because that hill's really tall, you know? We're gonna buy some, we're gonna buy some, some stencils to do some handicaps and some of that stuff anyway, I mean. Use road paint, paint it white.
Yes, signs, that's.
Kids are very hard to see going these, coming off Ferrellines. If you have kids on bicycles or whatever, they're very hard to see there. And they don't always stop, I mean, it's just, it's, but I agree with Jeff, I think painting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see.
That's why I ask about the signs, because if you did that, and a kid touches that sign, or you put it, you know, we've got that one down at Mike and Jill's now. But if you had one on both ends of that, and it was during, during the time of the day for school and that stuff, and they flashed yellow, I mean, you know, if you can't see them, you don't need to be driving.
Yeah, because there's not gonna be a stop sign anymore.
No, if you take it out, there won't be a stop sign there.
Right.
But there's only two times a day they'd be crossing, I mean, you know. And we'd set it like we do now, from seven to, you know, but it could go off at nine o'clock, and then come back on at eleven for lunch, and then, you know, like, I see in great men a lot of those school signs that way. I mean, you're gonna have some expense involved in those signs, I think their signs are about fifteen hundred dollars apiece. But they're still cheaper than concrete, I mean. But that's why I ask about the wiring, because if we need to do something, we kinda need to know where they're gonna go, and get them buried, if we want it ready for school.
If we don't do the sidewalk thing, we're obviously probably just out on the whole deal.
As much as I hate that stop sign, I wonder if it's wise to take that stop sign out?
Yeah, in the study, you know, that's what it should be taken out. Said to leave this one right here, you know, and take the other one out. Yeah, said take that one out, and these two on. Yeah.
Well, it's a business zone, it's supposed to be twenty mile an hour anyway, but we know that if you take that out there, it'll be thirty clear to the stop line.
Give our police department something to do.
I said, I said we connect the side, or connect the crosswalk and paint it up like Jeff says, way more feasible, we can, we can still, we can still do the whole thing.
Yeah, if, if you just put a sidewalk up on the rec center property in between the driveways, you know, there wouldn't be a whole lot of concrete there, if you just want a sidewalk to get them off the street.
We get a lot of, we get a lot of water off the roof on that side, when it rains, that spout comes down off the northeast corner, it kicks a lot of water off of there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I guess the cross that, you get there, but.
So tell her we're okay going in.
Not interested in that.
I like everything else, I just don't like that, the concrete sidewalk.
So we're going forth with the actual lines and painted, that are painted on here in the signs?
Yeah, I think that's.
Have you seen this, Jeff? No, because with, when we got this packet, we got a piece of paper that had specifics on where the signs. Well, I thought there was something else, it had like more wording in it, but, so we're following plans, everything besides the sidewalk, I guess?
Maybe a stop sign.
Yeah.
You see any problem with those lines, Jeff, and the painting up by the school zone, that looks simple enough?
No, I think so, yeah.
Pretty easy.
Yeah.
I guess we just need to kinda.
I mean, we can put, we can put, stencils in there, you know, whatever we need to do.
Schedule in a time.
You think we can get that done by fall?
No, I think so, yeah, we'll wanna, we usually try and paint before school starts anyway.
We're gonna have to wait for Lisa to get.
But something I.
So once we get Lisa and then we can coordinate.
Something that we need to be on the same page as that, uh. K dot, when they made these plans, it's specific measurements on there.
They're six foot, I believe.
To, to where those lines, we need to get very specific on those. So it means getting the plan and not just painting lines.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
I guess David, maybe, maybe it's your, just to make you notify it, notify you that, you know, we are very interested in doing this before school. If you just coordinate with Lisa, she, you know, she's gonna have to get signs, I guess you can't paint it, markings on the ground without having signs, but.
I have that.
Try to schedule in a time, but make sure that, probably try to have it before school so everybody can.
Yep. The only thing that might happen here is that we paint this and then it may get chatted over and then we'll repaint it.
Oh, yeah.
Because we won't get it sealed probably until, you know, when they, when the county gets done with theirs, sometimes late September. But we'll have a painted time for school on that and we'll just have to redo it after the chat's on.
What, what's this install curb extensions and sidewalk connections? I don't. I missed, I wasn't here when this first came on, what is this?
That was just because they thought that they needed, instead of shipping the kids across the street here, they would put them across the street here and put curb extensions and sidewalk there.
I guess to get to that parking lot over there across from the library easily.
We could just paint it, we could just paint another crosswalk where that curb extension is.
Yeah. Where are we at here?
Sit right across the street from the library, on the north side of the library.
Well, I don't know about that.
Oh, where they were gonna bring those abutments out?
There's no sidewalk there on the library right now.
Well, maybe we can come down to the library's approach, or the library's sidewalk.
There's no, there's no sidewalk on the east side.
Can we come across, oh, well, yeah, that's right.
That's, I think that's why they come across where they did is cause there was.
Is there a sidewalk?
To the front of that house, there was a sidewalk coming down the street.
There is, yeah, there is at the house, but south of there, there's not.
Right.
And there's no parking right there too.
And so that's why they had it where it come right into there.
Because they're trying to get to this off street parking lot.
I think so.
Yeah.
Surely we can come up with a plan before then.
Oh, I think.
Well, that might not be an off street parking lot, cause that's where the buses are.
That's a pretty minimal.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. That's not gonna be an off street bar, parking lot when it's full of buses. If it's gonna be a bus lot.
Yeah, you're right.
That's all changed.
That's a good point. Well, that's pretty minimal for compared to not pouring a sidewalk.
I mean, we can put a couple across there if we need to.
Yep. I don't think anybody's gonna speak to that.
No.
There we go, we got it.
It's always topus, there's always topus. Okay. Speed bump.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, moving on. Anything from the police chief?
Um, I need you guys to decide if you wanna talk about. Can we talk about it now or if you guys wanna talk about?
Executive session?
Oh.
And, yeah, do you guys wanna talk about it in open session or executive session? Cause if it's.
Executive session.
Cause if it's not employee performance, then it needs to be.
It's not employee performance if you just need to approve.
Hourly.
We, there's still discussion, like, cause we don't.
It is on this performance, so isn't it, that that's gonna affect that? I mean, isn't that one directly related to the other?
Oh, you, you told me, I mean, if you want to talk about him, then, then that's executive session.
Yes. Yes.
Just kidding, I'll need to amend the agenda later.
Yeah, we would need to amend the agenda.
Is she here?
Yeah. Yeah, she was saying that.
Uh, the chief just wanted me to let you guys know the policy about the vicious animal that we talked about last meeting. He, I told him about that and he is gonna get a policy in place. If he gets it, he'll email it to me and then I can give it to you guys. If he's not got it done before he gets back, so. But he's rewriting the whole policy book, so.
Is everything going good?
Yeah. Yeah, and thanks to the city guys, they've been helping with the, the animal control, so.
We got some raccoons running rampant?
Yeah, the city, yeah, took care of that, so. I didn't have to get out of bed at seven o'clock in the morning, so it's nice.
We'll just, we'll just do it at the end, I'll just, we'll just amend it at the end and add it.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Fire chief, Michael.
I don't have anything.
Alright. City clerk, Jamie.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Okay, moving on, city superintendent Jeff.
Um, just a couple of things. I was approached by the gal over at the wit center about the carpet on the walls in the skate room, in the skate area in there about it coming loose and. Being pretty nasty and that. I know we've addressed this a time or two. And I just wondered kinda where we wanna head. She wanted to tear it off there. I said, if you do. You're gonna have glue six foot tall all the way around it. You know, you're gonna have to replace it or whether we need to see about repairing it or if we can be shampooed, it's kinda nasty. You know, or what to do with it. I mean. You know, we beat this thing in the head half a dozen times between that and the rug on the, on the front floor and that other stuff and. So I told her I would bring it to you and discuss it, how you wanna, you know, if you wanna go ahead and try and figure out some ways to. You know, to try and repair it or. I mean, whatever we do is gonna be expensive. There's not money in the budget to do anything over there to speak of at all, and that's what I explained to her. I mean, sometimes we kinda shuffle some stuff out of other departments to pay to. Keep everything above the table so we don't throw her in the hole, but. But, you know, we try to maintain what we can, but there's just not a lot of money there to work with. You know, we've done some lighting here and there, we did some in the kitchen, we've done a little bit out the skating rink floor. But, uh. I just, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
Have we ever had a quote on what it costs to replace all that carpet?
I think we looked at it once when Cory was still here, but I don't think we have in the last couple of years. I might, I might call and have somebody come down and look at it. I can have you an answer at the next meeting, hopefully.
There's issues beyond just the carpet on the walls, I mean.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
I think.
That northeast corner needs a, needs a lot of repair. I mean, there's just quite a few things.
It's, looks horrible.
That building, that's ours, that's the city's sole responsibility.
Yeah, it is.
What material is it behind the carpet, Jeff?
Sheetrock, it's five eights, I think, yeah.
Cut the sheetrock off.
Sheetrock. I mean, if you keep a kickboard around the bottom of it like there is and you clean it up, you might be able to paint it a neutral color that wouldn't look so bad, you know? And get that carpet ripped off there, but I'm afraid we're just gonna have miles of glue on it. I don't know how we get it off, I don't have a clue.
I would say looking to. Get a price on the carpet, I guess, you know, we can't, you know, we wanna upkeep it.
Yeah.
It's important to the kids, you know, that's.
Like you said, it's, that's just a minimal part of the whole deal, but, you know, we're gonna have to do something. It's not getting any better.
I mean, the roof's been replaced, I guess.
Does it, does it really structurally sound?
It's not bad, though.
It's no worse than this one.
In places, in places.
It's probably not any worse than this building that we're in right now.
No.
I'm not gonna tie her down, I'll tell you that.
Okay.
I think it's worth fixing up.
I think we need to include it in our schedule.
And is this, is this the city's building to fix up or is this?
We are responsible for, yes.
We are responsible for maintaining it and the only money we have is the interest off the wit. Yeah.
Which, what'd you say, a six hundred a year?
It's the way that you look at it though, because it was given, cause I've had, I've had a hard time with this and I've done a lot of thinking and researching on all of it. It was donated to the city with the understanding that the sunflower center would be able to be in there. Given the. Interest money off of the CD that they left behind, but. It's still the city's responsibility of the building and that's just. May or may not have been neglected over however many years, so with everything else, we're running into. The issue of no money and needing to make serious repairs.
So what is the rec department's responsibility of housing?
The rec has been there from what I understand for free.
They don't have, they don't have responsibilities in there. We pay the utilities, we pay all of it.
Boy, that's a good deal.
Yeah.
The senior, the senior center doesn't. The, the agreement with them is they get to be in there and you pay for everything.
Yeah, that part's fine, but we really screwed up by just letting them stay there rent free and not make any money to put back into the building. The thing is how to approach them now.
So.
We need to get creative. I think at this point, the thing is to have Jeff get quotes for the carpet. And meanwhile, we can get creative and do some thinking and talk about it the next meeting.
Well, as we do our budget for the next budget, perhaps maybe we should look at making this a budgetary item.
Well, and I believe that it's.
So we do fund the maintenance of it, it is a budgetary item.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but really, I think when, when the guys do stuff, I don't know that Jeff actually takes it out of the wit center budget. He, like he said, he kinda pieces it from whatever he's doing.
Yeah, we take some out of it. I mean, you know, we put new lighting in the kitchen a while back and we, and they paid for about half of it. I mean, we took part of it out of the electric, you know, just, just to help kinda cushion it because.
It is a line item.
I think the total budget's like twelve or thirteen hundred dollars a year, it's nothing, you know?
But I think there's more in there than that.
But we pay for cleaning out of it and, and then we pay for all the maintenance on the building and, and, and the utilities and all that stuff, you know? And, uh, and like I told you before, we, we shuffle it around. I mean, there's just no money there, you know?
I, uh, I think you gotta start the rec department. They've been housing in there for a long time. They're giving their program revitalization, they, they can chip up and give their stomping ground a revitalization.
They also have a pretty good budget.
I would, that's what I'm aware of, so. I don't think that would be out of line to talk with the rec department. You can coordinate with, who's president, Sean?
Yeah.
Send an email back.
Or maybe someone can come.
I mean, we've done the same thing with the ball diamond and stuff. It's all metered together with everything, the pool and all that stuff, you know, and the city just eats it, I mean.
Yep.
They did purchase, when we put the lights up, they did buy the lighting years ago and the poles and that stuff, but we put it in for free, you know?
Yep.
And we have, we have brought that to, uh, it's been several months now, but. They were here one time and we did discuss options of moving forward and. And paying rent.
Well, I certainly don't.
They were opposed to paying their, their.
Yeah, there's, there's no reason.
I would hope not.
Good.
I think it's something that the whole, entire community benefits, therefore the entire community, rec can help defeat department, city and everybody should step up to play.
Absolutely.
It shouldn't just be our total responsibility.
So it's some.
Probably need another zero on the thirteen hundred that we're getting on.
I would say that's right. You can get some bids, we can renegotiate or discuss however they wanna look at it.
Probably be a target of a representative from the city that's on the rec board, right?
I would say that's a good one. So, we can get some bids.
Go get ahold of Bert, Bert. So we're leaving it in their hands to see what they can do for us?
I don't think that's the way I'm gonna look at it. I think we're gonna tell them what we need from them. That's the way I look at it. I think we're in the driver's seat, we have a building that they're using.
I'd say get some quotes, Jeff, on the carpet. Surrounding the skating rink.
But while they're getting bids on the, the carpet for the walls and the skating rink, the carpet that's actually.
In the entryway.
On the inside, on the floor and around the, the desk, the, it looks bad, I mean, get, get breakdown.
I'll just have them come down and figure it all, we're breaking apart.
All, yeah.
Yeah.
Be the easiest thing right there.
If you're gonna put carpet in, you might as well do it one time.
We'll break it in pieces and then you can look at it from there, what it costs to do this part and this part and this part, okay?
Absolutely.
I think Ross is absolutely correct that. You know, it might be our building, but we're providing a lot to somebody else that's.
It's not out, it's not out of line for them to, to ask to help out.
It's not out of line. Well, I think you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
I'll get ahold of the rec commission.
Okay, thanks.
The only, the only other thing I had is earlier in the spring. Uh, some of you may remember, some of you may not, that the state had told us that we need to put an overflow on the water tower. Um, I called the guy the other day, cause I hadn't heard anything from him and the weather's held him up like it has everybody else, but it is on the agenda for sometime this summer, so. We'll have it done so we can satisfy KDHE, so. Anyway.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on. City attorney, John.
I don't have anything, unless you have something for me.
Anybody have any questions for John? Okay, okay, moving into the public hearing for zoning.
So basically you just have to. Close out of regular meetings.
Six oh two west first.
Yeah, recess regular meeting and open into the public meeting.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess a city council meeting and open the public hearing for zoning. Ready? Okay, we'll open this meeting to public hearing for zoning. Who we have?
So six oh two west first is gonna be the rezoning of SNS Tire.
Basically already talked about it once.
Yeah, I haven't had anyone.
This is final approval?
I haven't had anyone come in unless someone's here to bring it up.
Hey, I'm Julie Nick and I had the property east of SNS Tire. And, um, I got the letter from the city. I would like to know what he intends to do that it has to be rezoned industrial.
Um, actually, honestly, there's, I'm not changing anything. It was just, I was given a special use permit with restrictions on what I can and can't do there. And all I did was ask to be rezoned, actually, commercial and the zoning board recommended industrial. But outside of that, it's still a tire business.
So you're not going to be warehousing or manufacturing or anything like that?
Nope.
The only stipulation that's different between what he had and what he's gonna have is that it allows him to be able to leave. His tires out for the truck to come by and pick up where before he was supposed to dispose of them or have them put behind the fence. That's really the reason that we changed it, because there was some discrepancy about. The time limit that the tires were out there before they'd been hauled off and that stuff.
Okay.
So it's basically everything's gonna stay the same.
Alright, I have one more question. Um, my address is the four hundred block. Unruh's down the street or the last house on the north side going out of town, they're the five hundred block. Why is SNS Tire the six hundred block?
You would have to ask the United States Postal Service.
Because I keep getting Kim Unruh's packages off of FedEx and UPS. And, um, it was pointed out to me one day by one of the drivers that, well, the guy next door's six hundred block, so you have to be five hundred.
The, the United States Postal Service is the one that gave me the.
Gave me the.
Really?
Gave me that address, yeah.
Okay.
We get all of ours through the zoning now. Every time that we do a different, a lot or a service that hasn't been there before, we call the, we call the dispatcher and the head of the dispatcher's does the nine ones one. Markings and that's the address they give us, so.
So how do we resolve that problem?
I'd put a big sign out front that says you're four hundred instead of six hundred. Say, no, don't stop here if it's not.
Don't stop here.
That's right.
Okay.
If it's mine, leave it here.
So in other words, nothing's changing with your business? Nothing at all?
Isn't it more that basically you've been operating a few things out of compliance and this is gonna, you're not changing any the way you operate, you're just gonna be within your limits now?
Right, yes.
It's, it's actually that he's been operating out of compliance on his hours or his tire storage and this is gonna let him be in compliance. He's not gonna change any of his operation. It's just gonna allow him that he's gonna be up to par now.
Okay, well, that was my question because.
Right.
I thought, you know, are you gonna do something that's gonna devalue my property?
Nope, absolutely not.
Nothing's gonna change. He's actually gonna be legal or whatever the word is for what he's supposed to be.
He's by the book.
By the book, there you go, that's better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on six oh two west first?
Do they have to be approved one by one or?
Yes.
Cause he's not gonna vote.
Oh, yeah, okay. So we need to vote.
Make motion to approve six oh two west first, SNS Tire from special use permit to industrial.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Four one. Marshall abstained. Okay, moving on to six six zero east eighth.
Which one's that?
Industrial Park.
So I think, I think that there's a little bit of confusion about that because what we did, and then I went and talked to Carl. Over at the county appraisers office. So I think, I think that there's a little bit of confusion about that because what we did, and then I went and talked to Carl over at the county appraisers office. He, Amy from the zoning board had a packet this thick of all of the properties that may or may not have been understood when we were going through everything. So basically after I got done talking to Carl, his suggestion is to just rezone what the city owns out there, not anyone's property, not anyone else's property. We are just looking at rezoning our property to the industrial park at this time. Due to the fact that, cause I think at one time they had talked about including in some of those houses, um, I don't know some of the names, but basically from the way that I understand it, it'd be right in this area and some of these houses here and like basically all of this area is what was at first being discussed. But even if we put in like Fisher's farm that L on the corner, if we put that to industrial, then if that would change hands, that wouldn't necessarily be able to be farmed again. So Carl didn't think it would be a good idea for us to put those stipulations on existing properties and businesses or what have you. You know, even if someone had a house or a residential area, if it was industrial, it, there's just a lot of stipulation. So he does suggest that it is just our property and that is what I put out in the newspaper and to the citizens, so.
What, what is it now and what are we changing it to?
I believe that it's just residential right now. Ever since I was here, everyone talked about the industrial park and it was never, do what?
I just, I'm not, I just didn't even know when we talked about it, I guess. I'm just trying to catch up.
At the last, well, it'd be too many to go.
It's been the same, well, a little further than that, wasn't it?
You know, I remember that.
When we talked about-
So I'll change it to industrial water treatment plant and the property north that the city has that's farmland right now.
Let me see if I can pull up the zoning map for you guys.
Danny, do you guys have issues with us rezoning that or questions or?
I don't know. I don't know. I talked to Mark and Jamie both and they answered most, most of my questions.
And it is awful on.
You know, wanted to see why or what's gonna change and, and I know you guys vote this now, but say twenty years down the road. You know, what, what's gonna be the possibility of anything changing? And, and is it still gonna be farm ground behind us then? The city leases that, correct?
Well, still haven't found the lease, but I'm working on that part too. I found payments, but, um, basically the, to, the reasoning behind this is the incentive, you know, a lot of communities to bring in businesses or induc- industrial plants or what have you. Have it zoned for the rent, like to be available for the, instead of, hey, reaching out, we have the spot, but we're gonna have this process of ninety days that you have to wait. So here, if there is ever an option of getting something that we can get to our community, it is there and it's available and it's not, hey, you have to wait ninety days, but we really want you to come. It's, it's a tool basically if and when the city does ever wanna reach out to have that option available.
Somebody decides to come in and put a scrapyard behind my house, I mean, I can't be happy with that, you know?
I don't know that it's a scrap.
I don't know as-
Just an example. I'm just saying, you know?
Right, I mean, yeah. I don't know if we'd probably allow that, but-
Yeah.
I mean, there are some ordinances still that have to be followed even to go with it. It's more so available if somebody wants to, you know, we had talked about putting a place for trucks to park and keeping them off of our street. And I know Jeff had mentioned the far northeast side of that, you know, six hundred feet off the highway, quick access for them to come in and keep them off of our streets. That would be one way, you know, that we could utilize that property out there. But just having something available if someone wanted to come in and put a business in sometime.
So, so currently the property that abuts Danny to the north is on residential.
It's all residential over there.
And with, about Dick also on the north side of Dick's also?
No.
There is a good job back there.
It's Dove's property and it is residential as well. That Dove has an L shape that she farms and then it's the city's and then Fisher's own an L shape. If I'm correct.
Yeah, that's right.
That's correct. But if you change it to industrial, it can still be farmed?
The city could still lease it out as being farmed because it wouldn't change, it's when it changes hands, I believe, is when the issues come, come up. But like, like I said, I still haven't found the lease agreement, so I'm still working on.
No, if, 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 if they quit farming it and nobody wants to lease it, then it, you know, just becomes some overrun thing like it was before, you know?
I think we would still let them farm it. I think we'd still carry out a lease.
Well, I don't think they're farming though anymore, are they? Are they?
Yeah, we don't.
We don't, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd still allow them to farm it. It would just be one of them things if it come available that somebody was looking for an industrial property to build. That we could make it available and take a portion out of what they're farming and, and allow that person to build there.
And this is kind of a senseless question now, but if it was residential, then why is the water facility there now? Is that, is that, can you put that on a residential?
Well, that's why, that's why you got a nice white fence around your property when-
I know that, but I'm just-
When they had to apply for a special use permit to put that there.
But they never had that meeting until it was already built, cause I came to that meeting after it was already built.
Exactly. I was on the zoning board at that time. Yeah, we're gonna counsel them. But, yeah, I mean-
You know, I wish that water treatment plant wasn't there a lot more than you do and it doesn't have anything to do with my house. Just the six zeros that I'm in about.
I don't know if I were Danny that I would wish to change the property from residential to industrial.
If we wanna use that as a truck parking lot, we've gotta change it, don't we?
And I don't know if I were Danny, I'd want a truck parking lot there. I think I would have objections to changing it from residential to industrial or utilizing as a truck parking. I don't think I would want the property changed.
We don't know what it's gonna be, but-
I don't, I don't think I would, I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna support changing it.
We as a city have done nothing to bring in businesses, I feel like, and I think this is a step forward to doing something for the future of the town.
Well, that may be, but you have family that have built, their families there and build nice home there. You stuck a water treatment plant next to him. I don't know that I, I'm not gonna support it.
But nothing's probably gonna be built directly north of his house because we have settlement ponds out there and stuff like that. It would be more clear over on Eighth Street.
We're not, we're not building it downtown. He's the last house on the edge of town. You have to take that into factor.
As long as it's residential, you can have more houses out there next to him.
It's gonna be-
Somebody can build houses out there. City could sell it for residential.
Two blocks away from his house.
It'd be different if it was right up next to his house, like we did the water treatment facility.
I thought maybe you were all wanting to change it to industrial so you could pave the road.
Get Jim's opinion on that while you're here, Danny, cause he's back in your play on that, asking if he wants to pave your road in your house.
I do wanna say I really appreciate the work they've done out there and the drainage is better. I don't wanna say the roads a lot, it's better, but, but the drainage is a lot better. And so I appreciate the work they've done. I don't know how much more they're gonna do, but I appreciate the work they've done, so.
Okay, any more discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I feel like I came out to say something. If, if and when you decide to put an industry out there or some, a business, where is the, where is the street gonna be that allows access to that?
Would have to be Eighth Street.
It would be off of Eighth Street, not off of-
Not off of-
Fifth.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there wouldn't be any other option.
It would have to be off of Eighth Street, out there on the dirt road.
Yeah, I think we had just done some discussing when I was on the zoning board with Jeff as far as where we'd run, uh, storm sewer and electrical and stuff. I think, didn't we say we were gonna have to come off Fifth?
Part of it would have to. With the, with the sewer system, the way it is, we'd have to build, we'd have to build a lift station in there. We'd probably have to go west down Eighth to get in back there somewhere to be able to pump the sewage. Uh, electricity would have to come off of North Prairie. I mean, there would be an extensive amount of investment there to be able to get utilities out there.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, I think Eighth Street is, as far as access, what's your concern with it? Are you just curious? I'm just curious, yeah. Yeah. And, and if it stays residential and people start buying lots, is that feasible? People buy lots, build houses, you're gonna have to have streets, gutters, more than one probably. I'm just-
It could always be changed back to residential.
It could be.
If there was interest in building that.
You're gonna have the same expense with water, utilities, all that, whether it's industrial or residential. I mean, you still gotta supply the people, all that other stuff, so, or give them permits, put wells down and septic systems.
Yeah.
I know the whole reason the water facility is where it is is because of the sewage system and all that. Cause they had wanted to put it on Eighth Street, but it was a lot more money. And so if you're talking about parking trucks, is it gonna be the same thing? You know, I don't know how, what you're talking about as far as parking trucks or building a parking lot or electricity or anything like that, but I just don't want it to be a thing where they say, well, let's make a truck parking lot, but it's gonna be cheaper if we build it right there.
No, I think if we done trucks, it would be on the far northeast corner, cause that would be-
The whole point is to use Eighth Street for the trucks. That's all.
To keep them off of our other streets.
That's what makes it so viable.
And we actually have power that Jeff could run tie in out there where they brought everything underground for the grocery store and Chad Fisher's and all that. And they could just run it down and then just shoot it straight across if we put a truck parking out there. Because they wouldn't necessarily need the water and sewer, just electricity and plug trucks in and have some lights out there.
I wish they would park there instead of coming down the road all the time. It's a nuisance.
Okay, any more discussion?
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Motion to make six sixty east eighth from residential to conver- uh, industrial.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, four one.
He's a black sheep in the family, aren't ya?
About the first stop.
Would we be out of line if we got up and left now?
Nope.
No. Since I don't know where the bathroom is, I-
I would love to stay, but I run the cameras off, so.
Okay, moving on to the next property, two oh four south Monroe.
This is the shed. Um, sent it out. I had a few people ask questions. I answered the questions. And I don't believe anyone's here to reject.
This is just for the garage?
The garage at, um-
Yep.
For a tight corner, you just let, yeah.
So where, where's that put the edge of the building to the street?
The right away is fifteen feet off of the edge of the right away of the street and we, they brought it back to seven feet so they could have room. See, we have fifteen-
From the edge of the street?
No, no, from the, the, the street is, was it sixty feet wide? It's been a long time since I looked at this, but behind that, there's a fifteen foot-
Yeah.
City has a fifteen foot right away. Or a twenty foot right away. Behind that, see where you can't build. So it essentially makes it thirty plus twenty would be fifty feet off the center of the street before she could construct, construct anything. And they wanted, they wanted that twenty feet to be brought back to thirteen, so they could have seven more feet there to be able to allow room for the garage on the north side, was what it was. And it doesn't block the vision as far as the corner, any of that stuff. There's really, really doesn't, doesn't interfere with anything.
Jeff, that is not blocking the utilities, correct?
No, nope.
So this is actually for the seven foot variance? I'd make a motion to approve the two oh four south Monroe variance for the garage.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh.
Thank you.
Okay, close this portion of the public hearing for zoning, reopen city council meeting. Okay, old business, West Street. We were talking about that one.
Are you gonna do anything south of the tracks, Dave? I forgot to ask that.
As soon as, uh, north side's done, I'm not gonna tackle both of them at the same time.
Looks good. Well, what's, what's the plan, I guess, on West? It was kinda hard to understand the, the riding, but-
Have you drove one on West, West Street?
No, I just seen it was closed off and I drove by Davis's.
It's got a ditch on the west side of it now.
Okay. And then I seen the millings you guys thrown, so is that it? Where the railroad tracks are at? The milling's a big pile? Is that basically?
That was just on the approach. Just helps, you know, when trucks come over, they're worried about bottoming out.
So is that it then there? Or did you guys have enough millings or were you gonna go?
That was kind of a little bit of everything is what it was. Just to get, get some height there where we can clear that.
So is that it there then? Are we done with the approach part?
Well, it'd probably be more by the time you put rock on it and working back and forth, I'm sure.
They, they work it over pretty good. You just need to go look at it, so. And also on the south side, if you cut a ditch, that'll raise the south side too. Put that there, that'll help.
I wanna tie it in with the counties, cause the counties is deeper. So I wanna take that thirty foot out or whatever. Me and Jason went down there, um-
And he dug.
Pretty much what, what it is now while I was packing it. Um, but I wanna take it farther without locating and all that, um, to do it.
On the south side?
Yep.
It's got a little, it'll work.
And tie it with the county ditch.
It'll be great.
Good idea. It's not gonna alleviate the drop in the tracks, but it's gonna help it a bunch.
Cut it in half for sure.
Yeah.
Northwest Street, that it's kinda getting blown down or washed down, all the pea gravel and the concrete. What's the answer there? Do we, I mean, do we got any ideas?
I mean, the only thing-
I don't know why I've never noticed it, but it's like way bad all of a sudden, see?
You know, I think last year, Jason, we started on that. Um, we could only go so far with that grader, um, on the edge. So we did the north half roughly. Um, we have a paddleboard that used to be used, uh, for the backhoe, you know, to pull that back up. The only other thing's Lake County. Um, we can take the backhoe out, paddleboard, I think it's four or five foot long, and pull it back up onto the rope.
I was just curious.
And away from the fence on the east side, cause it's pretty deep there too.
It's just getting washed.
Yeah, it's only-
Just blowed it out all the years. We're cleared down to the manhole lids.
They had a, I think they had the county dig them out with the excavator one year. Maybe that was further north up by Paradise.
It was north, yeah, yeah. But that little paddle, we've got hooks on the end of the teeth on the backhoe, you can make it fairly smooth, you know, instead of, it's a long process, but at least back up to the curbing, we can pull it out, so. Will help it some. We had another twenty feet on the west side to help it a lot.
Yeah.
But that's not gonna happen, we know, so.
I was just curious.
Okay, any other information regarding street signs that we haven't already talked about? Okay, truck route.
I did have somebody stop me and they wanted to know, and I, actually, I guess I agree, but, um, from the elevator that's at Prairie. Where they wanted to know if we could connect off of First Street from Prairie down the elevator. Those-
That corner there at Brent's?
And, and this was their argument, and I, and I can't tell them they're wrong, is it's three blocks dirt, one block pavement. And it would let the trucks run their circle.
Yeah.
Is, you pull off the scales.
Off the scales.
You can go and you go that, and they said, there's only two intersections on that, four blocks. And I, I gotta say, it's a pretty valid point on all things.
Well, it's fairly wide there too. It's easier to turn. We're trying to keep, the, really, the one that we had the hardest time keeping them off of was the block west. I mean, they tore that corner up really bad. I have a problem taking that sign down there.
I don't know. I guess, I, I don't know. I, I guess I'm asking what you guys-
Well, you got trucks down there too. I mean, you know, if you make that corner, yeah.
And we go back and we turn the other way and then I sneak up it sometimes. I ain't gonna say I didn't. I did it today.
But you've got a corner there that's wide enough to turn on too compared to the other streets.
It would, it would prevent a little bottlenecking up Broadway, for instance, this, his question was during harvest.
Sure.
All the inbounds, outbound, both, they would give them.
Yeah. We never have set any of that in stone yet anyway, have we?
No, I have the ordinance saved.
Yeah.
Got signs on it. Yeah, that's official, it comes in.
That's not, that's not a big deal.
I don't know. Anybody got any opinion?
But do you also agree, I mean, it tears up the asphalt pretty good, so I mean, we, we'd be making it worse.
One thing I would suggest that everybody in this room does, is at five mile an hour, whether it's a bicycle, golf cart, ride a horse, whatever. Ride every street in this town and look at its condition. And then, think about where you want the trucks, because loaded trucks are tearing up the streets. You don't park loaded trucks in Larnet, you don't park them in Pratt, you don't park them in Great Ban. I don't know, and if we're seeing this damage, that much damage on top, it's probably only the tip of the iceberg what's doing, what's underneath that this, next council's going to be faced with. I don't know that loaded trucks need to be running in town, and I know it's really convenient to make a circle around a co-op.
Well, it's literally one block, and then also, this is their other defense, and they said this, is they were gonna call Kansas, Kansas is, Kansas is the second or third largest electrical user in the town. And they're gonna start making a stink with Kansas and get them to back them, and I totally agree, they're not wrong, it's, it's one block of pavement. I mean, I.
I'd rather see one block of pavement than.
I agree, I agree. I'm not gonna say that in the long run, we would, we might not have to cut that out before that corner of concrete to protect it, you know, I don't know. I mean, we can sure try it. I, I, you've got, you've got a viable point.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't argue with him.
No, no, you can't.
It's two intersections, it's four blocks, and it's only one block of pavement, and it'll keep the trucks from meeting each other on Broadway. And, and then also, this was his point, and it goes against what Jim is, he said, everybody's worried about them turning, and they're gonna tear it up. And he said, what are we gonna take into effect when the trucks are turning against each other at the corner of Broadway and they're gonna cut it twice as hard? Because the outbounds are setting facing north.
Sure.
When if they go over to Prairie, we could swing it way wide and get it.
Send them off the scales and get them out there.
And I, I don't know, I guess, I, I don't care, I'm only one vote, but I, I totally agree with the guy.
If we can break them to do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, there you go, so.
Yeah, if you can basically eliminate it to two spots, turn on to the asphalt on First Street, then. One spot would be great.
The more places we can eliminate trucks, the better we can afford to replace our streets and our infrastructure.
Some of it is just the wear and tear of an ag town, but like we said, taking trucks home is so much more detrimental. Than, than three weeks of harvest in the spring or summer.
I rode my bike in the morning and fall. In this quadrant, there were six trucks parked.
Yeah, that's right.
And I, judging the way they were setting, I was, I didn't stop and tap on them, but I'd say all six of them were loaded.
That's right, yeah.
And that just, if you look at the infrastructure, it just turned it up, we can't afford it.
But anyway, I guess on the truck route thing, I didn't know if that, that was before.
That would be a bad idea.
So, for the next meeting, Jeff and I can relook at the ordinance and get the streets updated.
Sure.
And I have also been compiling some information with, um, different communities with truck parking. I think I have four responses. So, I planned on reviewing what they do. And I, I think I'm to the point where I might get a city, like their city map, just so I can understand a little bit better on all of that. But I'm hoping for a few more responses too. And then I'll report back to you with what other communities do.
Sounds good.
All right, I can go ahead and take that sign off. That street that says no trucks.
Yeah, sure.
One on each end.
I mean, I'm for it.
Okay.
If it's only a block of asphalt, I'd just pull it out.
Well, it's on a, it's on a hot mat street there, that is an advantage, that street's six inches thick, that one block. But we, our biggest concern is the corner. You know, turn, because when we did that, when we first started doing that, we had quite a few guys turn on there and it cut that new asphalt pretty hard, but.
But I like it if they're coming out unloaded.
But, yeah, that's right.
And maybe they'll run it backwards, I mean, I guess I can't control everyone, but.
We might keep them off those other two blocks, you know.
If we have a, a method to our madness, maybe we can.
And just make it known that, you know, that's, you know, they're not gonna let them come up to other side streets or they're gonna get a ticket.
They could just kinda pass the word along, Kansas, you know, that's basically where they're going, you know, if they just pass, you know, come in loaded down.
Pretty easy to come off them scales and come right up there, either go east or west from there.
And tons, tons of trucks go south, which is really good.
They do, yeah.
It's fantastic.
Would it be beneficial to get like a map of the truck route to post at Kansas Coa?
I doubt that anybody lets it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I think word of mouth, we can all tell.
I think, I think, like Ross said, I think, you know, if we just do that, I think we're gonna alleviate a lot of it, because they, they're long enough, by the time they get off the scales, there's really only one other place they can turn. And if we can stop them from going up Pearl.
Right.
And make them go to Prairie, then it's not a problem.
We do have a sign that says no trucks on Pearl right there?
On all, every one of.
I think all them signs are up, I believe they are.
Nailed it, that's right.
They don't pay no attention to it, does it?
Yeah. But we let Tori write some tickets and we won't have that problem anymore.
Monroe and Pearl.
Yeah, if we can keep them off of those two, those two streets are really thin. And they're narrow, they're both fairly narrow.
Parking on both sides, that's right.
So you think you can have that ready to approve the next meeting?
The truck route?
We can try it.
It's been ready for.
Like four years ago.
We tossed this around a little bit.
We're getting it.
Practice makes perfect.
And you say that is a six inch asphalt.
Yes, that's a hot mat street, that last one is. Sure is.
Well, that goes, that goes for us.
Goes for us.
Yeah. Yeah, it's way tougher than most of them.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, moving on, new business, Fourth of July.
What days do you want people to shoot off fireworks up here? I mean, it is called the Fourth of July.
This always takes a while, on the east side.
What days Fourth of July on?
No, I'm not. I have bowed out of this, I said, I'll do whatever you guys wanna do.
And then, like, we need to know.
Jim said all, all days that they can sell them.
Well, and that, yeah, what days can, I need to tell our, our fireworks stands when they can start.
They're gonna be shot all days they can sell them anyway, what difference it make?
Twenty ninth to the fourth.
Twenty ninth.
July ninth to June, or July fourth, at midnight.
I mean, you gotta think of the people that get together, the family get together, whether it's Friday night or Saturday, that's how I feel about it.
Fourth of July is on a Thursday.
Fourth of July is on Thursday.
So that's why, my opinion's at least Thursday, Friday, if not Thursday, Friday, Saturday, for family reasons.
When I was a kid, we got the fourth.
Yeah.
No matter what day it's on. You're not much that, you're not that much younger than me.
Okay, so, what'd you say Scott, how many days can sell?
Can sell from the twenty ninth of June to the fourth midnight. Your issue with Friday, Saturday, Sunday is if they don't already have their stuff bought, they're not gonna have any.
No, I mean. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but yeah.
But still, Friday, Saturday, they're gonna have to have it bought by Thursday at midnight, because that's as long as we can sell.
Who says that?
That's state.
State?
So like, we could basically go from the twenty ninth through the fifth, sixth, seventh, if we want all weekend, so.
They're just gonna have to buy their stuff on Thursday before midnight, because we can't sell it after that.
So you're, going with, what you're saying is going past the fourth isn't as counterproductive, or is a little counterproductive, if they don't have them bought, it doesn't matter anyway.
Right, if they don't have it bought, it's not gonna matter, because they won't be able to get it. And that's not just here, that's anywhere, I mean, that's state.
I think state is actually the twenty seventh through the fourth.
Right, but still, they're done on the fourth at midnight.
Can't buy them after the fourth at midnight.
Well, I got fireworks from last year. No, I mean, just when you make this decision, you gotta think about the majority of the town, I guess, so.
It's just hard to cram all that fun in in four or five days, isn't it?
Elderly and.
Yeah, I just. What'd you do last year?
We like skipped a day last year, didn't we?
Boy, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, like two days. Isn't that right?
I think.
It was on the Wednesday last year, we done it Wednesday and I think Friday. I don't remember.
Skip Wednesday.
Okay, we don't have any more discussion, do I hear a motion?
I would make a motion to do it fourth, fifth, and sixth, which is Thursday, Friday, Saturday. From seven AM to midnight.
All three days?
Thursday through. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
So, so these fourth, fifth, and bottom on the twenty seventh, we'll be able to shoot them till the fourth.
You say Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
From seven AM to midnight.
We're not doing Pratt. We don't, we're not on that fireworks.
Tell them to come down here Saturday.
See, it could be worse.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, do I hear a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
Jesus Christ, Christ. We've been here almost two hours.
I have a motion to shoot fireworks on Wednesday, the third, from eight in the morning till midnight. Thursday, the fourth, from eight to midnight.
So Wednesday and Thursday from eight to midnight.
Just an idea, I don't know, some people might have to work fourth, maybe get together on the third, I don't know.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, do I hear a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
Ross, you go to try.
How about we ban the shooting of fireworks in town?
My hands are sweating.
You think the fourth and the fifth's out of the question? You sell fireworks, you think that'll affect your sales and hurt the local economy?
My opinion to you guys is you can do whichever you want, because they can buy them for six days, if they've got them, they're gonna pop them, it don't matter what days you tell them they can. It just makes it easier on your officer if they can pop them.
We only got ten ticket books, we're gonna ride on tickets.
That's who you're gonna make it easy on your officer, because they're, they're gonna have them, they're gonna pop them.
It's Independence Day, guys, it.
It's called July, fourth, fifth, sixth.
So you're okay with it?
No.
You got a second?
No. I say the fourth and the fifth. Eight midnight, that's plenty good, that counts the weekend, you get Friday night, you got the weekend off, if you got the fourth off, I make a motion for.
Are you giving the city employees the fifth off?
Yeah.
If you, if you wanna take it off, you can, I'm sure you have some in your comp time or your, or your elected time off, don't you? I think we all.
I think you do it the third, fourth, and fifth.
I think you should just do it anyways, and then that way I might get.
Say it again?
Think you should just do, when they start selling them, I'm doing all those days, because they're gonna pop them anyways, and then I'm gonna get called and have to come out every single time and go check out every fireworks, I'm the only officer, so.
Oh, you're new to town.
We almost had it resolved.
You're gonna get all the dolls for lighting off, you mind?
I think it's insane to restrict the shooting of fireworks from the time that he starts selling them or any base starts selling. Because, here's the thing, if you wanna know the honest truth, the county doesn't regulate it. So, if they can buy them the twenty ninth, they can drive to the west edge of St. John and light them off all they want. Now, if it's dry out, I would much rather have them in town, where we don't have wheat filts, where we don't have, so. Fireworks are gonna be shot.
They're gonna be shot no matter what.
Shot for a weekend.
Twenty ninth, we can start selling them till the fourth at midnight.
How many, how many?
That's six days of seven.
That's Saturday to Thursday.
We slide off fireworks for a week.
Now, that being said, you're probably not gonna, if you do approve it for every day, you're probably not gonna see a lot of action the first few days.
I would hope not.
It's when you tell them they can't that they wanna pop them.
No matter what the council does, aside, we're gonna get complaints from at least one or two people, so.
I wanna make a motion again for the fourth, fifth, and sixth from seven AM.
I have a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
Yeah, change an hour of it, change it to eight AM. Make the same one. Say it again, motion, change it to eight AM.
Make a motion to go on the fourth, fifth, and sixth from eight AM to midnight. Shoot fireworks.
So Thursday.
Fourth.
And Saturday.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion dies.
I, I move from the time that he can legally sell fireworks at eight AM that day until midnight the fourth. And we allow shooting the fireworks in town, as bad as it is, but there's no reason for Tori to be running out. Chasing all these errant, miscreants.
Yeah, what is your cell number there, Jim, I wanna say that.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
I think, I've kinda been meeting everybody, so I'll try a new motion.
Motion dies for lack of second.
I would make a motion to go from the third.
John make a motion.
From the third to the sixth, eight AM to midnight.
I have a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
The sixth is Saturday night? Second.
I have a motion as second, all in favor? All opposed?
Yeah.
Three to two, motion dies.
Mike, yeah, Mike, you?
I'm right here.
Everything, everything okay with fire department?
Yes.
I was, I was looking for your speech.
We're done.
Well, I mean, at midnight, but you think. I would rather fight a fire, or I'd rather have, shoot them off in town than in the country. It's always drier in the country, I mean, we don't hardly have any fires in town, they're all out in the country.
Right, okay.
It's a mess, because they grow really fast out in the country.
So light them off for a weekend?
That's your decision, not mine.
I was trying to compromise, Marsha wants.
Yeah, they're gonna do it anyway, I mean, I.
I don't really care.
He wants it on the third, Jim wants it all week, I didn't want, I was like in between, I mean.
The city of, the city of Maxville allows them to shoot them from the time they can buy them till two days after.
I mean, I just think that's absurd.
But they don't have any issues.
They don't have any issues.
They don't have any issues.
I see.
You don't have cops running around because people are shooting them.
Has Stafford said their date yet?
They give you two weekends. They give you two weekends.
But if you think about holidays, like Memorial Day, everybody always celebrates the weekend before. So if you're gonna celebrate Fourth of July, you're gonna celebrate that June twenty ninth weekend.
Or the weekend after.
I think it's gonna be the weekend after, the fourth or Thursday. People are gonna be taking Friday. And they're gonna do it.
No joke. I've had, I had one person reach out to me wanting to know, so, and I said, we would probably discuss it tonight, because she was looking at their family coming in on the weekend.
Well, we just included a, third, what, third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
Third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, and you didn't vote yes on it.
It's 'cause I'm not on board, if I had it my way, I'd do it the fourth only, or the fourth and the fifth.
You're not as American as it, that's why.
Geez, Louise, I'm just getting my priorities mixed up on firework day, it's crazy.
Your kids aren't old enough yet.
They ain't got to pop fireworks for four or five days.
Oh, they'll be making peroxide bombs and blowing them off underneath the cop car.
Make a motion.
Please daddy.
I've made one, yeah.
You know, wife, you compromise all the time.
Okay.
I make a motion for, I'm very good at that, I'm not gonna do that again. Come on up, make a motion. I'm, I'm standing behind what I motioned the very first time, it's third and fourth.
Restrict Scott's right to sell fireworks in town. You're gonna be set up all those days, every day?
Twenty ninth and the.
Yeah, you're gonna be open all day, every day?
No, no, from four o'clock till, we don't open till after four o'clock, three, four o'clock in the afternoon. Everybody's at work till then anyway, so.
They're gonna be out popping fireworks, Jim said.
Well, I mean, the adults are what's paying for the kids' product, though. And they're gonna be at work all day.
You're saying that you personally would like on just the fourth, but I mean, think about the families that wanna come in on the Saturday.
I motioned the fourth and the fifth, and then we made a motion the fourth, fifth, and sixth. I'm not on, I'm never gonna vote for popping those things for six or seven days.
What about? I just said four.
Yeah, I voted for you on that, didn't I? Well, I did the three days, I should say, I didn't vote on the fourth.
My hands are sweating, guys.
Can somebody make a motion for the fourth, fifth, and sixth, eight AM to midnight?
Somebody.
I'm asking, I think somebody did.
I just did.
Yeah, but you didn't have a second, Ed, or vote on it.
Fourth, fifth, and sixth, eight AM to midnight.
I'll vote on it this time, let's get it done.
And you seconded.
Yeah, but now you gotta change it, 'cause only the person that. Nine AM to midnight.
No, you just amend it, can't you?
No, only if the person who voted on the failing side can reconsider the motion. So, it would have had to been a no vote on the last motion.
So Doran moves.
Yeah, Doran voted no when he's changing it now.
Thursday through Saturday.
I'll change it. Eight AM?
Alright.
To midnight.
To midnight.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
That's right.
All opposed? Motion carries, two to two.
Did you do that on purpose?
Okay, now, I wanna know what you're gonna direct Tori to do when the kids start popping fireworks as soon as he starts selling them.
That's the biggest crisis we got going.
It's the biggest crisis. If she looks the other way, is everybody okay?
I don't, she can use her own discretion to do her job or not do her job.
We can't-
She's on the spot.
We can't tell her to-
I mean, it's a noise complaint. I mean, we're gonna get called out. It don't matter what time it is, so. It doesn't matter, take it away, it's even after my forty hours and that's already the end of the week, so I'm gonna be over forty hours and that's gonna be over without me, I guess.
It'll be fine. It's too late, it's not set. Fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Okay.
That was complicated, wasn't it?
Okay, so the Dillons Building, Scott's actually here because his location for his firework display is, is being used and he contacted, they contacted me and now that the Dillons Building is, I mean, it's not renovated, but I think we did an okay job to get it usable. They are requesting that they put their firework stand in the Dillons Building with, correct me if I'm wrong, with the donation to the Jubilee Fund?
If that's what you would like.
I would love that.
How much you gonna give us?
That's between me and her.
You'd have to, you'd have to have insurance.
He has insurance.
I have my own million dollar insurance policy.
Momma had to see it, and the city's gonna have to be named as a second insurer.
Right.
Question, what would the state fire marshal say about that?
It's not the state.
The inside.
Back over there behind you.
I would think that would be a safer place to have it than the station down there.
It, as long as he's got all the requirements met, it doesn't matter.
On the square and everything.
Yeah, they do them in the shell building, so.
Okay.
Yeah, he just has to-
And that's actually, if this doesn't fly, I would rather be in the Dillons Building, but if this doesn't fly, have the shell building reserved. I just think we'd have a lot better in and out in the Dillons Building.
You know, I think that it's not being utilized. I don't, I don't see any issue with having Scott in there utilizing it just for that short period, but that's up to-
I'm not opposed to it. John, you?
I mean, I've done a fireworks contract before, I mean, and I could, we could do something like that and it's gonna require identification, it's gonna require that he name the city as a second insurer and provide a certificate.
They're not selling fireworks out of the shell building this year, Scott?
No, they moved out to GBT Fisher Building on Highland.
Okay.
Fisher's gonna let him work out of the shop part of that, in the back, I guess. And my deal out there just was a clinky date. She totally forgot that I did that and she rented the building out long term. So, she, it was an intentional deal. She, she told me she was sorry up and down too many times. It's just business. But she did rent it out long term to somebody else, not thinking, and after she did, it's too late, so.
I'm not opposed to it as long as John gets her ducks covered.
Uh, contribution to the Jubilee Committee.
Make sure you get a lot of money off them.
Twenty percent.
You can do it.
You know, honestly, if, if, I don't care if, if he wants to rent it and pay the Jubilee Committee, if that's a way that they can raise money and they wanna do it in the future too, I'm fine with, you know, Jamie taking control of, that building's sitting empty. If she can generate some revenue for the Jubilee, that's less than it comes out of the city.
We have some other ideas and works for it.
And that's what I was thinking when I talked to you guys, let her head that deal up and if she can make some extra money for Jubilee, it's sitting there being unused, it just won't be used.
Right.
I'm on board.
We already paid for it, so we'd pay for it and pay the utilities.
So do we need a motion to direct you, John?
Yeah, yeah, with, if, just a motion to allow the mayor to enter into a contract with, do you have a company name?
Lawson Motorsports.
Lawson Motorsports for the renting of the Dillons Building upon approval of, attorney's approval of the contract.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh.
Thank you.
Next thing, Jimmy?
Um, I don't know why I called it land bank assessments, but the tax sale I thought was gonna be certified, but it's not.
Yeah, they have a hearing scheduled in July.
Do they?
Hudson held some stuff up.
Okay.
Somebody's challenged some bowling fees in Hudson or something.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed like addresses where we had to go one by one for whatever is left? Or if we could just generalize whatever, whatever properties are left that have our city assessment fees would be waived at the beginning of the-
Yeah, I think the council needs to decide, and I think you just do it, if the property's gonna sell at the tax sale, which means that it's not going to be purchased by the current owner, that you would agree to waive those fees, but you don't wanna waive it for them because they may be reclaimed.
How many do we have on there?
There's like five or six.
Do you have their addresses? Could you get those in the mail?
There's six.
They didn't give me, they wouldn't send me a list today.
I've got the updated.
They were supposed to give me a list like two weeks ago.
Deal is, they, they keep pushing back and then for just a lot of more time, they could pay all of them off.
I thought at the, the county commission meeting that we went to, I thought that they discussed it that day that they kind of got on to him about it needing to get done, and then when I called over again today to double check, they said that it's still not.
Okay, so in St. John, you have-
This is just us, or this is every, this is-
I'm just telling you St. John's stuff.
I know, but just the, that the city has?
Well, these are the properties that are on the tax auction.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
As of six twelve.
Go for it.
Four oh five West Second, four thirteen West Second, three oh two East First, two oh six South Pearl, two thirteen South Broadway, and three fifteen West Second.
No, but they all have assessments, I guess.
Old house.
But the date's not set?
There is no date set yet.
No, Mike Robinson called me, I wanna say two weeks ago, and tried to work with my secretary to set a hearing date because I, I think I'm representing the city of Hudson in their dispute, but I, nothing's been added to my calendar, so I don't think they were even able to resolve to set a hearing date.
Which ones have assessments on them?
Oh, I lied to you, there's one other one. No, I told you, two thirteen South Broadway. Should have an assessment.
Is that Toots?
Yes.
Toots, the West Second's, three oh two East First, what's on that?
I'm in favor.
Three oh two East First with Toots.
Yeah, Beam's has it.
The Bay of the-
Two oh six South Pearl.
I don't think-
I don't know that they-
I struck myself, no. Yeah, I think you just make it so that as soon as the auction starts, all them assessments are gone.
Yeah.
Because if you don't, whether the city decides to buy them or somebody else decides to buy them, ain't nobody paying the sixty-five hundred dollars on that empty lot down there. And so then they just don't sell. And I can pretty much tell you that if the city don't buy them, someone's gonna buy all these properties and they're all gonna come down. And so you're gonna end up with, end up with some properties.
I think that's how, somebody got a hold of some of those properties in the place.
So what, we're holding on to waive the fees now when we don't even have a date set in the city? But they're not gonna be released until the, the minute the auction starts?
Yeah, I'd have to look, I mean, just give me the authority to release them when it's appropriate. Whenever they can be.
You want that in a motion?
Approach this part. Uh, yeah, you put it in a motion.
I may, we give John the authority to release the assessments that they have, or when it's appropriate today in the auction, or as he deems fit. Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay.
Um, the CMB license for Pueblo, somehow when they did it last year, they only gave them half a year. Their previous CMB license was only until like June, and then it needed to be renewed, unlike, usually it's the end of the year, twelve thirty-one is when they all, so basically we let them know that it was a mistake and we're gonna do the half of year to get them caught up, and then they'll be on the normal cycle. So I just need approval from you guys that they can continue their CMB license and sell beer out there.
So move, second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay.
A letter from ICA VIVO, Carolyn approached me about the project that they're working on over here at the, where the pharmacy was. They are, they're, I mean, they gutted it, they've started redoing it. Basically, part of this grant that they got, the USDA is requesting that we put in handicap parking spot. When I talked to John, we needed it in writing, so I submitted that to Chief. He was here for a few days. And I have the approval in my pile here somewhere from Chief. He just wants, you know, he approved it according, like making sure that it met the, the standards of everything, and I'll be, once it's approved, I'll get with David with getting all of that. We'll have to paint the, paint the blue lines or whatever, and then put up, I think, a sign.
That's a cut the curb too.
No, you don't.
No, there were ones that put it on the north end here.
Yeah.
Oh.
There were ones that put it up.
For that reason, right?
For that reason.
Yeah. So that'd be way easier.
That's better yet.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that in David's packet, he had talked about, he had put in a quote for one of those-
The stencil?
Mm-hmm. So I think we'll probably look at Bean ordering some of those to get-
It's reusable.
Yeah.
I'd say get it out.
Yeah. They're on the other box, but we reuse it wherever we need to.
She needs, I think she's gonna have to send them out to USDA, so she just needs.
Motion.
I may move to add a handicap parking in front of Second Hand.
Yeah.
Broadway and, yeah. Broadway and First on the south-
Broadway and Fourth.
Broadway and Fourth on the southeast corner.
Yeah.
Where the stencil marks this.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay.
We need to amend?
Need to amend.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session for ten minutes to include council, mayor.
All elected personnel.
Oh, yeah, all elected personnel to discuss employee performance of the police department. Council, mayor, attorney, city clerk. Ten minutes.
Turn in twelve.
Return at nine fifteen.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Return at nine fifteen. Called this meeting back to order, haven't taken no action and entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to pay Alan Adams effective June sixteen, tell his return half of his salary per pay period.
Say why?
No, but what, what's, what's that amount?
Half of his, I don't know. Doesn't matter, just half of his pay.
Yeah, it needs to be, that needs to be in the motion.
Well, let me get it pulled back here.
But we don't even say about why he's rerunning the lawsuit.
Thousand and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Yeah.
Well, that's perfect check.
Per pay period.
Per pay period, I got you, yeah.
Yes, I took his monthly divided by four. A thousand and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents per pay period.
With the pay periods every two weeks?
Two to twentieth.
He's, he's gonna write it.
Okay, I have a motion on the table for a second.
Wait.
Pay period is every two weeks, and if he's major.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanna leave two.
Cause monthly he gets forty-one.
Forty-one even?
Forty-one sixty-six ninety-three.
Forty-one sixty-six point nine two.
So half of that would be twenty.
Divided by two is twenty-eighty-three divided by that in half. It's a thousand and forty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
I'm really confused because I thought it was half of his salary, so it would-
That is per paycheck. He's paying for two checks a month.
Two checks a month. On behalf of his monthly salary.
I got you.
Alright, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, five oh. Okay, having no more business, entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh.